Okay with that. Donna, all right. So, we are starting the planning board meeting on August 26th. A reminder to everybody that we are video and audio taped for those at home, so if you're going to speak, you need to use a microphone and identify yourself. That, our chair, Steve, is out ill, so our best wishes go to Steve. And we'll just dive right into our agenda, which MacArthur Ave is a request for continuance. So, do we want to make a motion to continue that to our next meeting, which we already have set on the 18th? We already have a couple, you'll see at the end of our agenda, a couple of items on the agenda, so it would have to come after those times.
What is the next opening, Betsy?
We can either do it right at 7:30, or if you want to do it maybe 8:15.
Motion to continue MacArthur Ave public hearing until September 18th at... The time did you say? 8:15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that's there. So, next one's supposed to start at 7:45. Do we have to wait for 7:45?
We do, because it is a public hearing.
All right, so we're gonna jump ahead a little bit then, if we can, if there's anything that we could squeeze in quickly.
How about the street numbering system?
Any updates on that, Ray?
I gave you something, a new revised version of that, based on the comments that we had at the last meeting.
In your packet, it's there.
It is in your packet, yeah. Looks like this. This would be an amendment to the subdivision and land use set plan regulations of the town, so that would be done by the planning board. What I would suggest, if the planning board feels comfortable tonight, to maybe move to schedule a public hearing for a future date. I understand that you just received it tonight, so I think that would be a little bit premature, so maybe we can just put it on the agenda for next meeting, after you've all had a chance to read and digest what's been put before you.
What's different about this version compared to the one we got earlier?
I didn't give you the marked up version, but there were a few tweaks, just in terms of some of the wording. There was some revisions that pertain to referencing the Board of Selectmen rather than the planning board. When I originally started putting this together, I was thinking this might be a bylaw amendment, and since we're moving more towards the subdivision, I tweaked it so that it referenced the subdivision regulations, the numbering system actually, effectively, is in there now. And then it just references the existing bylaws that deal with street numbering.
Okay.
Essentially, what you saw last time, this is it. I can also give you a marked up version, if you'd like, so that you can see the actual changes.
So, when you're going down the left and the right, do you orient it by, like you're heading where north is, or something? Because if you head down the street one way, right would be on one hand, left would be on the other.
Yeah, I think I said that in there. I thought I picked a direction. Maybe I didn't. Maybe I didn't. You know, you read these things so many times that you think you've got everything in there, but that's why you have a number of people take a look at it and see if it makes sense.
It says the starting point, by the proximity of its starting point, to a main town road, so I don't know if we have roads where it sort of would be main on either end. I don't know.
Could be. Could be. I think what it's trying, I mean, it's a uniform system, so you're trying to pick one way to do that one street and not have the street end up with two different numbering systems.
What is the current system called for?
Do we even have a current?
Interesting, you ask. There really isn't a current system. What we're doing now is, we're using what they, what the developer may propose as the numbering system, and then we're crossing that with the, you know, Betsy basically is looking at that and working with the tax assessor as to what they think is appropriate.
And eliminating number 13?
Yeah, many times eliminating number 13, yeah. So, there is a system, but it's not a lockdown system that we follow. This gives you some criteria to think about as you come up with another.
Many streets already follow this plan?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this isn't too far off from what we're doing now, but it just gives you some words to look at and some guidance when there is a question as to what should we do. For the most part, you don't really, we don't really have many problems with numbering streets, but this will avoid any future problems, or at least help avoid it.
So, does it give us the opportunity to go back and correct some areas where we do have confusion, like you had brought to our attention, or does it only apply to new?
This would apply to new roads.
Just new?
Yeah.
So, we can't go back?
But this would be a basis for, if you're going to try to fix something, at least you can refer back to the existing and in-place system.
Yeah. The next to last paragraph on the first page, where you're assigning numbers to each 50-foot interval?
Yes.
Most lot sizes in the residential areas have frontage more than 50 feet, though, don't they?
True, true, but if you end up with something that's smaller lots, in some cases, at least now you've got some options, or if the driveway ends up in a different location, because that's what we're referencing as to how you number the lot, it gives you some other numbers. And it can't hurt, even going forward for the future, to have extra numbers on a lot.
So, I mean, if you have a 200-foot frontage on your house, you're going to skip four numbers between you and your neighbor, basically?
Correct, yeah.
The corner lots are a tough thing, Ray, because a lot of times, public safety, I think, assumes that the street is where the front door is.
Yes.
And in this section here, it talks about corner lots, assigned appropriate number which corresponds to the street from which the driveway originates. But I think in most cases, you'd be looking at the front door. I know I have a couple of instances like that right now.
Yeah, we could make that amendment to reference the front door rather than the driveway. That's on page two?
Yeah. It's 1-39.
Thank you.
Well, I think it looks pretty straightforward. I personally would be in favor of doing a public hearing on this, and how others are feeling about it.
Yeah, I like it.
Sure, thank you.
So, do we have time on the, to advertise before the next one, or do we have to put it out?
Just a suggestion, too, we will be having a public hearing for zoning changes. Can we maybe incorporate it at that public hearing?
We could do that.
We'll be doing that in October.
Sure, why not? Why not, sure?
So, we can wait till we get a little closer to set the date, or?
But this is just a rig, not a zoning bylaw, correct?
That's right.
So, just we have to?
We don't have, we just have to notify in the paper before a meeting.
Right, doesn't have to go to town meeting or anything.
Correct, yep.
No, but if we're going to be advertising a hearing for the zoning changes?
Do it at the same time, yeah.
We can do it at the same time and do it and save a few dollars on a hearing notice.
Okay.
Yep.
So, we'll just keep it on our tickler as the meetings come up, and we know we need to come backwards. All right, so, I think we're at a point now where we can
Yep, we're on time.
Move ahead with 242 Dedham Street, Dunkin' Donuts.
Thank you, Richard American, American Engineering, Philly applicant, 242 Dedham Street. We have revised a couple of drawings, which I will give you here. There's two sheets there. What we did is, we did a lighting plan for you, and this is based on the original lighting plan, what the original lights, you know, what they did. And then we looked at the mobile station, which has a maximum intensity under the canopy of 24.4 foot candles.
That was Daley's?
That was Daley's, yeah. What we have is 24 and a half maximum under the canopy, and then around the edge, it's about 10. It varies, 10, 11, and then it works out from there. So, this area here is, you know, higher than your five-foot candle requirement, maximum requirement, but it doesn't go beyond that area. And then around here, we're essentially less than one foot candle around the perimeter. So, I think that that works, and that, again, that works with the lights that were originally proposed, so I think that covers it. And then, the other thing I did is, you had asked me about the Gulf sign, so we talked to them, and they put this little, it's a 27-square-foot circle, Gulf across the center with, you know, white stripe and an orange around it, and there'd be one of those on each side of the canopy. So, other than that, I think that's all the new information. Bill, the inspector, asked me today to give him some information on the building, to give you any additional information, Betsy?
He did provide some feedback.
Yeah, he was questioning the number of parking spaces. I know we have way too many, but he wanted to get the requirement right, so he was going to look into that.
Yeah, I did end up speaking with the building official, and he went through the building, tried to figure out how many parking spaces that it would require. He came up with the number 18.
Okay.
You're above that with 24?
Yeah, we have 33, no, 33, yeah.
Yeah, so he was, he was okay with that, with that number of parking spaces.
Yeah, he wanted to do his own math.
Yeah, and the, we did end up talking about the sign that's on the, on the pump overhead thing.
Yes.
And that is, you know, that's a sign approval, so that would be a separate approval.
Okay.
So, that's just another step that we would have to move forward with at a later date.
Sure.
Shouldn't hold this up.
Okay, that's fine. It's a standard Gulf sign, wherever you see the Gulf, that's the same sign that you're going to do.
It was supposed to be the zoning board hearing on the 20th about the impervious law?
The zoning board had the hearing, voted it. I haven't seen the results, but I think they approved.
I don't think they rendered a decision, but they did approve the variance for the law.
They voted?
Yeah.
Yes, they just had a decision.
They voted. They might not have recorded, but it's not clear yet.
Sure, great, okay, good to know.
Overfiling list.
And we do have a decision drafted, so I don't know if you want to walk us through it, if anyone else had any other questions before that? Address all the issues I had on my list, the lighting, the sign.
Comment number 14, Dave?
Number 14 has regarded the submission of stormwater management calculations. I don't think that we, although, although the current system is sized similar to the former system.
Yes, we didn't change it, right.
Yeah, we didn't receive updated calculations, nor did we receive onsite soils data. So, I think probably the biggest issue with that is the large system behind the building.
Yeah, the original approval asked them to do a test over prior to construction of the lot system in the back, which is up in here. We don't have a problem with that. We hadn't been asked to revisit the drainage couch to this point, so we didn't. I did redo the drainage calculations prior to, and it seemed to be, you know, this whole system eventually overflows into the town system here. It's kind of a trade-off for the sidewalk here, so I don't really think there's an issue there.
You're going to do a test over witness by the board of health?
We will do a test over witness by whoever you want. Sure, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it might be appropriate as a condition of approval.
Yeah, that's fine. We're prepared to do it. We just, we hadn't got around to doing it yet.
You're doing it?
Yeah, we're prepared to do it.
Number 20, you want to address number 20?
Certainly. Yeah, actually, there were a couple of building configuration issues. The freezer cooler unit may conflict with the drive-through traffic, and we raised that issue in number 20.
I didn't, I haven't seen those comments, so. It's, it's in the back, it will be flush with the back of the building. It really kind of looks like part of the building, even though it's a separate unit. That's typical for them, yeah.
Well, the issue was access, he was trying to refer to. Access is from where?
The freezer, it's inside. Inside.
Inside, not outside. Inside.
Inside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they have, yeah.
So, that probably takes care of that.
So, deliveries will be through the building.
Yeah, we don't show that on the point, yeah, it's inside.
Yeah, and I guess the other issue was 25, whether or not the cashier would have full view of the, all the fueling positions, or whether parked cars?
On the layout of the inside, right, the cashier is up here. That was provided by the architect, so I don't know. Let's see. What he's talking about is, the cashier position is here for the convenience store pumps. So, they seem comfortable with it, like, again, this was an architect's design, so...
Yeah, the issue would be the parked cars in between the cashier and the fueling positions.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, every, you know, every Cumberland's and all those always have cars in the front, in front of it, so.
They address that through the security cameras and such?
Yeah, I think they do, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they have security cameras.
There should be no ballads at the end of the perpendicular pocket to the building by the walkway?
Along, along the front pocket? We can, we can put it there.
It's the curb, six inches.
The curb, six-inch curb, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's a cord, side. Yeah.
Planters might look a little nicer than bollocks.
I had a plant that got hit on the walk, went through a Chinese restaurant named themselves.
It's kind of a mixed bag, some of them have them, some of them don't, the bollocks, yeah.
Could you do something, that's right here, just said, that's more decorative but effective, like solid planters or something?
Site plans, two.
Well, we could, it eats up space unfortunately, you know.
Just the walk is what?
It's a five-foot walk, yeah.
What are you showing on the walk now, those squares?
Just the curb, yeah, just the curb.
Some squares or something?
I, you know, I don't know what those squares are. That was the previous one. Yeah, we're showing a four-foot walk, actually.
Yeah, that's pretty tight.
Yeah.
We'll put bollocks. I'm for that, so we don't have a problem with bollocks.
I think that might be better for your case as much as the public.
We usually put them in all the stores, so.
A lot of incidents were people hitting the gas rather than the...
I don't want someone to think I'm dumb, no.
I'll make the 6 o'clock news.
Well said, with compassion. So, you will put those at each parking spot?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you haven't seen this, but it's item 29, you talked a little bit about lighting in the context of Daley's, and then there's some reference to lighting in 29. Could you reconcile those two things for me, in terms of?
Yeah, I guess the maximum is 24.
24.4 is what they have.
Yeah, I do, the current industry standard's around 25, you know, and they're shielded fixtures.
Yeah, they're straight-down fixtures. They drop very quickly as you get away from the canopy.
So, it refers to a mobile station? What station?
Daley's is the mobile station.
That is the Daley's, okay, okay.
I think it's consistent.
Yeah, I went and I got the plans from Daley's.
Daley's decision was a maximum of 25-foot candles.
Yeah, and it varies, if you look, you know, places it's 18, something, places 20, but 24 and a half is the max.
What are the size of those entrance and exit signs that come off Route 1A?
I don't know that we have a size, yeah, there are.
Just looking for visibility as you're going towards Rentham, and you're gonna, you're entering on the far left, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, somebody coming up from Walpole to see that sign and not to go in the first entrance into the second one?
Betsy, do you have a copy, it's the same thing that we put in from when I did it at the store, with the menu board?
It's the same dimension, I think they're like three feet off the ground.
Yeah, they're low.
And what size are they?
Can we put bigger ones?
The entrance is, is... I wouldn't be against that. Yeah, that's the entrance there, John.
This is the entrance, the nautilus side, yeah.
So, somebody coming from Rentham would have to see that clear enough not to go into the first one?
Right. Yeah, you know, we find that people learn very quickly where the entrance and the exits are. There was, we've done a few of these, and, you know, there's always a lot of questions about how people are gonna, you know, are they gonna know where the in and where the out is? But most people are regular customers, and they figure it out after the first trip. Probably about three square feet, maybe.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
And they're lit how?
Exterior, yeah. The, usually those directional signs aren't even covered under the maximum size that is allowed.
You think that's okay, Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anybody here in the audience today with any comments on this project?
I'm one caller.
You just grab a microphone and identify yourself.
My name is Bob Olpach, living in town, 34 years, earnestly, get to it soon. I have a question about the Gulf gas station. The only question I have is, how about free air?
Well, we're not, we're not running the gas, we're just, we're the owners, so if the gas owner would like to get free air, I'm all for it.
You know, I, you know, a lot of times I pull up the gas station, I gotta pay 25 cents, and half the time, the machine doesn't even work, all right? And I don't, you know, it'd be nice if we could, you know, guys consider it, appreciate it.
Yeah, it's up to them. Well, I'd love to mention it, though.
Free air and coffee.
As long as you come to the North, North Dakota instead of the Walpole.
Yeah, that is, that is a thing. I don't think there's any free air anymore.
Later.
BJ's, oh, one way to go.
So, do we want to close the hearing?
You want to review the decision? There's several points in the decision that need to be discussed, too. Is the decision written?
It's a draft, it's a draft.
It's a next one down, okay. It's very general at this point.
Yeah. I just wanted to point out that the availability of the sidewalk is still there. You know, there was a question in this decision, is, has we eliminated the retaining walls?
Yep.
But the grading plan still shows that the, it would be prepped for a cycle.
Are all the suggested conditions, David, in your letter listed in the condition?
Oh, in the draft decision?
Yes.
I haven't reviewed it, the draft decision.
Yeah, and we've talked about a couple more tonight that probably need to be added, so. But we can still close the hearing, because I think we're done collecting information.
If you would just give me a minute to look at this, a couple more things, but I agree, I think that's what we're gonna do. I agree, we're probably gonna close it, the public.
Yeah, or maybe not even, maybe wait for it to be modified, I don't know.
And maybe just the soils touch it?
That's in here.
That reflects the new square footage of the building, because I know that changed in the revision, too. What's your new square footage?
47.20.
46. It's actually 46.90.
That needs to be.
46.29.
Yeah, so that should be updated. Factual background paragraph also in...
Number one waiver request.
It's also in the purpose on the first page, under the purpose, construction of a building with a footprint of...
What is it, Rick? 46.90.
46.90.
Yep.
Okay. It's, it's throughout, actually, you'll have to do a search.
Yeah.
When is the appeal period up for your ZVA ruling?
Well, if they haven't, did they record it yet?
No, I don't think so.
So, it's, what is it, special, a variance?
20?
20?
It's a 20, 20-day field variance?
Thinking, I think it's 21 days.
So, you've still got a while?
Yeah, at least no, here.
Is there a sidewalk here, Sharon's Ave? Not to my knowledge.
Sharon's Ave, heading up Sharon's Ave, it's on the right. Are there sidewalks in place there now?
No, no sidewalks.
They did.
The sidewalk was intended to be in a long, I don't know if it continued.
Not the signs.
I think the DPW director was anticipating building sidewalks on 1A at some future date, you know, with a grant or something.
I may be incorrect, because, you know, the project has had various twists and turns, but, you know, we have the walkway, if you're coming from, I think it's 240 next door, from that direction, Walpole.
Yep.
So, you have the walkway, I think the idea is any foot traffic could walk
Yes.
in that direction, access that corner, if you will, access the property.
Yep.
So, the purpose of my question was just to understand from there, what exists as far as...
There's nothing on Sharon's, yeah.
Yeah, so we'd have to give some feedback on item waiver number two, about the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's what triggered it, that's what triggered my question.
We should decide how we want to...
Yeah, I talked to Al today, I just ran into him at Town Hall, and he said that they, he and the DPW director had agreed that he would like put the base gravel in, and then put a lobe over it and seat it, so that down the road, when the town gets some grant money to do sidewalks on 1A, they would, it would be all prepped and ready to go. So, we could do the same thing.
Well, why wouldn't we just put the sidewalk in?
Well, in terms of the elevations and such along the front of the property, is it conducive to?
Yes, it would be all graded, yeah.
We could put it in. It doesn't connect anywhere, but...
Yeah, it won't connect anywhere, that could be a problem.
Similarly, is up Sharon's Ave, although no request has been made of you to put gravel and then loam over it, is the, is the strip of land sufficient to accommodate a sidewalk in the future, just to?
It's tight down here at the corner, yeah, there's not enough room here. Up here, there's room, but not down at the corner, so I don't know whether you'd have to require an easement. But maybe, maybe at the time, you just make the intersection more regular than it is now, you know?
And is that because of grade, or?
No, that's the way it is now. It's kind of irregularly shaped. No, that's the way it is now. It's kind of irregularly shaped.
If I may, regarding the sidewalks, I spoke with Bob McGee, it's been a couple of weeks now, and he was concerned about the retaining wall and the slope that was going on, on the right side of the property. But as, as we moved forward with this project, we had discussions with American and, and in fact that there's a potential to regrade this so that there is no need to have.
Yeah, we've eliminated the requirement for the walls.
To have the stone wall. And Bob's impression was that that actually helps him out and helps him move forward with the sidewalks without the fear of any obstructions on the property.
And, and, you know, the elevation of the sidewalks, I'm thinking into the septic design, you know, so it won't be creating a problem after the fact, so, so we have it, we have it all anticipated there.
That's on Town Hall, right?
Yes, yes.
So you, Michelle's asked the question, should, should we be considering doing it now?
Right, even though, even though it goes nowhere, but.
Which I, it's, it's a valid question.
Well, I mean, it's a two-way street. If you.
Two-way sidewalk.
If you build it now and you don't get grant money for 10 years to do the rest, this thing's gonna be pretty dilapidated by the time you come in there, so.
I'd beg your pardon.
Yeah, really.
You've built things that dilapidate in 10 years?
Well, you know.
Concrete's not even cured for 10 years. I think we'd better ask our consultant that question rather than the applicant's consultant, just to be.
Yeah, there you go.
Just to be objective about the whole thing. Nothing personal.
All right, that's good.
All right.
So the fact that it's a state road, that's all part of the approval?
We would have to get permission to do, to put the sidewalk in. We don't have to have permission, though, to gravel it, but we would have to have permission to put the sidewalk in.
Will you state any curb cuts with the state?
Uh, we filed, I haven't really had any meetings yet. I'm gonna try to, now that it's all in there, I'll try to set something up for the next week or so. Go down there and see if we can push it along. I don't anticipate any problems.
Well, we, you know, we've been trying to catch up in terms of sidewalks throughout the town and not necessarily in commercial areas and residential areas.
Right, right.
It's something that the town is trying to do.
Yep.
And it's gonna take some time, so I, you know, I think what I'm struggling with is whether this is really the opportune time to do this rather than add more inventory without sidewalks.
I'm happy with the compromise that they've struck with Bob McGee. I think that cuts his cost and time to execute when he, when it is time to put the sidewalk in, so I can live with the present plan.
Yeah, it's basically just pavement you're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, you know, Bob offered, you know, overflow into the town drain here and, and as a trade-off, you know, and without any objections, so it's a fair trade, I think.
And could we include that in the conditions worded as such that to the satisfaction of the director of the DPW in terms of that grading and such, so that it is conducive to strictly asphalt when the time comes? I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, to base clear.
Satisfactory to me, as long as.
Eight inches of gravel.
Get that into this decision, something like that?
It looks like item six also requires a little feedback. It's talking again about the masonry concrete block retaining wall, which doesn't exist anymore, so it.
Yeah.
Gives us an option of either striking this section altogether or explaining why it's no longer needed. I'm in favor of just striking it if it's no longer applicable to the plan.
Yeah.
Just confuse as matters to explain why we don't really need to pay attention to it.
Okay.
Which one was that, Michelle?
It's on waiver number six.
Waiver number six.
Let's see, hmm, okay, so this doesn't refer to the wall to the right of the drive-thru?
No, it refers to the wall that was in front here.
That one, okay, yes, I agree with Michelle. That's, that's fine.
Are we taking, are we taking six out altogether?
Yes. Item 10, we just need the verification on what the not-to-exceed foot candles should be.
Yeah, I mean, the 25 seems reasonable.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's what we were just talking about. So in waiver number seven, since the frontage road is no longer required and the sidewalk has been accommodated in the proposed plan, is this still true? Well, we just talked about the fact that the sidewalk base is accommodated in the proposed plan.
Right, right.
Not the sidewalk itself. The frontage road is no longer required.
So maybe the easement came into play when there was a frontage road.
Yeah, there would be an easement.
Without the frontage road.
For a frontage.
Yeah, okay, okay, so that, and this goes, this nicks, nicks it totally, right? Eliminate seven, yes?
Yeah, we could strike seven, too, couldn't we? Yeah?
I think so.
And eight.
I mean, basically, there's no easement, no easements are required, right, for this development at this point, correct?
No, no, no.
So, yeah, I would agree. Seven and eight.
Yep.
You moved on too quickly.
10 is okay at 25-foot candles, right?
Dave, can you confirm that? Maxed out at something.
Do we save your permits from the fire department?
I have a, you, you need for the tanks?
Mm-hmm.
John?
We don't have that, right?
No, I don't, I don't think we have.
Maybe we do.
Um, they did present them, I don't believe that.
We have to draw a plan for him, the tank plan, based on.
We gotta make this contingent on getting the, the fire department's.
I mean, they got, they got permission from the slacking, right, on the amount of gallons, I think.
Yep.
So we have to go to the fire department just to get the particulars on the town.
Yeah, I guess, so, yeah, this whole thing would be contingent upon that.
Page four, number one, access, you using Beacon Hill standards?
For?
Oh, yeah.
Sidewalk?
Heard about that story, yes.
Unless, it's okay if you wanna do that for the rest of 1A.
You don't understand the joke. There's a big fight between the mayor of Boston and the historic commission in Beacon Hill about the access ramps and what the material's going to be. The mayor is putting in concrete and these plastic.
Yeah, those are.
Things with the bumps on them.
Strips. Yeah, those are required, yeah.
Yeah, well, Beacon Hill people want some.
They don't like the yellow.
They want the, the ramp, but they want a different design, you know?
Of course, yes, yes. Gary doesn't like yellow?
Now, now, number two in this area also talks about, rather than a sidewalk along Dedham Street, there would be a sidewalk along the, basically the right side of the property?
Mm-hmm, which he's got.
We have that, yeah.
Is this a place where you'd like to add maybe the?
Yeah, I don't think you say in lieu of the sidewalk. I think maybe we say in lieu of the actual asphalt, right? We still want the base and the.
Yeah.
Yes, and maybe that's, that's where we can put some language.
Yeah, so modify that, that condition.
How about something to the effect of six inches of crushed stone?
About 80, it said 80.
Eight inches of crushed.
Yeah, I don't know what the town standard is, to be honest with you.
Okay. Okay, how about if we just say then the crushed stone installed at the standard that?
In accordance with the town standards, yeah.
Thank you.
Dave, do you know what it is?
It might be 12.
Really? Yeah, whatever it is.
Just went up to 18, we better stop the conversation right now.
Now, this refers specifically to that walkway, which I, I don't wanna refer to as a sidewalk. Maybe that's the problem.
It's a walkway, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good, good point.
So that's what this refers to.
Yes.
Separate from the other conversation we had about the frontage in terms of.
Right, yes.
Preparing that for future asphalt, yeah.
Yeah, Ray's just suggesting that we, this is an opportunity to solidify what the agreement is.
Include it in the same paragraph.
Well, we call it a walkway instead of a side.
That one a walkway and then refer to the front one as the sidewalk, sidewalk base.
It is 12 inches.
12? Okay. Sidewalks will never fail in, no.
See? Over 10 years.
You're right, 10 years, they'll just be getting comfortable.
And then, yeah, it's being pointed out that number three, I, I thought this went before the DRB, the Design Review Board, but I'm not sure was the, the full requirement met, color samples, dimensions, all of that?
I don't know what situation.
The one that we thought was less attractive, the this one. We never looked at the modification plans.
I thought they did look at.
No, we did, yeah, we, we gave it the modification. But they didn't have all the specific colors. We had a picture view.
Yeah, it had different peak design in it.
Yeah, yeah, and I think the Design Review Board was okay with it, right? We didn't meet with them, we, they just sent them the materials and.
Could you follow up with Bob?
I did have occasion last night to ask Bob Nicodemus what the story was with, with the Design Review Board.
Mm-hmm.
He had stated about three or four weeks ago, he forwarded a recommendation to the planning board.
Oh, okay.
And they were okay with it.
Yeah.
The last one I have is, that's old. I don't know if that's the most.
Yeah, I think it was before, not the last thing, but the one before that, yeah.
So in terms of the wording, does it have to be modified? Because right now it says prior to endorsement that we need color samples and dimensions and stuff. I mean, I'm not sure.
If, if they're okay with it, you know, maybe.
Betsy, do you have a copy of that, of what Ray just referred to from, from DRB?
The last letter I have from them is March 26, 2013. I think there's something more recent from then.
Yeah, this would have been three, four weeks ago, tops.
Oh, okay. I mean, we could actually leave it like that, and if it's been fulfilled, then it's been fulfilled. I mean, if it's outstanding, if.
Yep.
We find out over the next few days.
Between now and endorsement date, yeah, right, yeah.
We owe you the courtesy of letting you know.
Okay, sure.
Right, yeah.
We talked about number 11. We satisfied with number 11, folks?
Let's see.
Miscellaneous.
We have a lot to say over that.
Miscellaneous 11, the cashier's location.
Do we have authority to, to rent them on that?
I didn't see that.
That's not on mine.
Well, I wonder, you know, where that came from. I mean, it almost sounds like it's a regulation type of thing, for that to come up, and I'm, I'm not familiar with it. I don't know if there's anything.
Inside, you mean?
Well, you know, because of the fueling, I think the point is, ideally, it would be within eyesight, you know, but now with cameras and electronics and such, maybe that addresses it, but I, I don't know, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any requirement. We can check with the building inspector on that, but.
Yeah, I would think that'd be more the building inspector, building compliance thing than planning board.
Yeah, I mean, it falls into this whole thing.
The building code thing, yes, right.
You know, when a fuel station goes in, I'm sure, in terms of.
Yeah, right.
Containment and.
Well, there is, yeah, there's all the tank thing and, yeah.
Fire suppression and all these types of things, so I would think it'd be in that context. I'm just not familiar with it, but.
Yeah, I'd kinda think that number 11 shouldn't be within our decision. It's really not part of the site line development.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
Strike this one.
Just as a matter of curiosity.
Still important, but.
I'm sorry, yes, it is. Just as a matter of curiosity, following up on something that's, that you said a moment ago, is there a fire suppression system built into the pump station?
Yes, they, yeah, they put them, run them up above, yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll have a.
Cancel.
An expert in that field do the.
Cancel.
Design of that, yeah. Yeah.
So number 12, we've already gotten feedback on the parking consultation, so that's been met.
Page you guys on?
We're on page four of eight, under miscellaneous, item number 12.
Mine stops at nine.
Really?
Hmm.
Got the Cliff Note version.
Yeah.
Is there another, another copy we could give, give him?
Oh, yeah.
Board of Health approval of septic system should stay in there as a condition, right?
Yeah, that's in progress. We submitted it, it's under review.
Started mocking this one up.
So now we're into general, but now, before we get into general, any other things that we need to add as conditions for the site, the soils that you were talking about?
It says it's gonna be observed by the Board of Health agent.
So does that get covered under the Board of Health septic system, or is that a different item that should be listed, different item?
It's, it's partially under the waiver, waiver five.
Yeah, it was actually somewhere, yeah.
So the waiver is maybe partially granted?
It was requested to waive.
Yeah, right, yes.
Granted, but.
Number five, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that covers it.
That should be, that should cover it.
And to John's point, is the fire department approval gonna be added as a condition on the, on the decision?
They can't proceed without it, so.
So I don't know where that goes.
Was there a condition before? Well, now it got his point, of course.
So what's added under miscellaneous? It is being recommended that we cite that as a condition of the approval. The details of the pump islands, the bollards, the fire suppression system, all of that should be cited as a condition of approval.
Yeah, that, that condition is in the original.
But it's not in our decision, though?
Just a general, all-town boards thing.
So I think that would.
Number 12.
I see, you're saying it's covered by, conditions by all, all town boards, agencies?
Page four.
Yeah, bottom of the page.
You guys think that covers it generally enough, just like that, or did you want something specific about?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not too concerned about that stuff, 'cause when the.
It'll be required anyway.
Whether it's the fire chief, fire marshal, whoever has to approve these things before they commit fuel to the tanks.
Yeah, the only objection I've had is, I don't know how long it'll take him, 'cause we gotta prepare a tank plan, and then he's gotta review it. It could take a little while, so.
Okay, so let's review the general and make sure we don't catch any errors.
Is it running, or is it number one?
No, can't be. Definitely had a decision.
Well, it may have started, maybe this thing has been churning for a while, maybe, maybe so.
Since it's a modification.
That 2014-01, I mean, it might be, 'cause this has been churning for a while, this project, but just wondering if that number's valid. What's the 2014-01, I'm not sure? The decision number?
No, it's just a general.
Our first decision of the year?
Oh, you have to get all your other permits. That's how they go.
Here we are in August and it's decision. Number one?
Yeah, it was in his. Yeah, endorsed without it, yeah.
Yeah, it was a bunch of stuff, so, so it could be.
Is this really the? Is this really our first decision of 2014? But we've had some sense this, this is just.
2013. It goes by when they were submitted.
Okay.
You had a slow year. You're having a slow year.
Not really.
Including the pottery.
Business is good.
Medical building?
The one adjacent to...
On your plaza?
Yeah.
That was 2013. All right, everybody. I say we close the hearing, and then we can take a vote on what we want to do with the decision. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Are you guys ready for us to close the hearing?
Close it.
All right.
We're all set, right?
Let's get a motion to do that first.
Motion to close the public hearing, 242 Denham Street.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now about the decision. Do we want to wait on the changes? Do we want to vote contingent upon the changes? What does everyone think?
I think we should vote on the contingent on the changes that we've just talked about.
Yeah, they're pretty minor. I agree.
Yeah, yeah, that's funny. As long as we've captured them all, we can put it in the form of a motion.
This has been going on a while. We ought to try to move it along as best we can here.
Yep. Want to give it a crack?
It's tricky, because some of these are contingencies of the approval, so it's not as straightforward just to list them.
Contingencies of what approval?
Well, we've got something, we get something with the ZBA, right? We have to get...
The ZBA has approved.
They've approved it.
Yeah, they have approved the lot coverage.
We don't necessarily have anything. What's that? Am I all set?
Yeah.
Yeah, make the motion.
Motion to approve the decision number 2014-01 for 242 Main Street, Denham Street, sorry, as amended.
Second.
Are you okay with that general note? We'll, of course, review it before we sign it, so. Are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the past, you've tried to capture...
Every single one.
In the motion.
All right. So next on the agenda is the Bella Rosa Stables. Hear from that? All right, so let's discuss it real quickly, since there's nobody else here. Maybe we can get through this pretty quickly. Betsy, I thought I overheard you saying that maybe somebody spoke to Pulte. Did...
I had a very brief conversation with Pulte.
What was you?
Apparently Howard Bailey did reach out to them, and they said, you know, that as long as Bella Rosa got all their approvals from all the town boards.
She's basically us.
And conservation, if needed, I don't know. Because it's agricultural.
Yep. This is no one that wishes to... As I had mentioned, I talked to Ray and Dave. My understanding of the rule is this parcel was not a part of the subdivision. It was sectioned out with a subdivision around it. It is covered under the agricultural state laws. And in a subdivision approval, a curb cut is allowed for the lot. The location is not specified, only the curb cut on that lot. It's only specified if it interferes with a catch basin, a hydrant, or is a site distance problem. That being said, anybody on this subdivision with the curb cuts on the recorded bylaws is able to change the location based on how they shift their house, move their garage, et cetera. They're allowed to maneuver that driveway curb cut wherever they choose. More so in the case of a farm, after dealing with the Conservation Commission, with the state and federal farming board and the regulations, they pretty much are unencumbered as a registered farm to do mostly whatever they want and avoid all local zoning and bylaws. That being said, I think if we look at the subdivision in place now with the houses that are currently built, if we check the ASBILs to the subdivision plan, you will find that most of those driveways are a good percentage and not in the spot as on the subdivision plan, which is the right of every homeowner and lot owner. That being said, my suggestion is that we withdraw the motion as a minor modification, because by approving a minor modification, I think we open ourselves up to going through uniformly the existing subdivision and taking every curb cut that is in a different place than the plans and asking them to come forward and come forward with a modification on their lots also. So my suggestion would be to withdraw the motion for minor modification, and my feeling is that this doesn't come under the jurisdiction of the planning board. Also suggested is that when, and customarily done, when a curb cut is moved, if there is already an existing curb in place, a driveway or sidewalk location in place, the move of the location should be coordinated with the Department of Public Works to make sure they put back the original state, any disturbance they do from what is already existing there.
So the way we voted on it last time was there were three questions at hand. The first was sort of a combination of what you're saying, John, which the first was whether we each felt that we had any say or jurisdiction over the decision. The second was if we said yes to that, did we think therefore it was a major or a minor? So I think, you know, what you're saying, we wouldn't have even had the right to vote on major or minor if the answer to the first question was, no, we don't have any jurisdiction over it.
Correct.
So I think, you know, we took that kind of as a vote, because we didn't have a definitive on whether, you know, you raised it to us, Ray, and we kind of talked about it. So I guess to kind of bring this right back to that first question. I mean, if it's definitive and we know absolutely we have no say over it, then it shouldn't be a major or a minor, because it shouldn't be a modification at all.
And for me personally, you know, just getting the input that I've heard here as far as Pulte, I'm satisfied. So regardless of whether we go down the path of modification or otherwise, that's moot as far as me personally, so.
I tend to agree, because then the third part was, well, let's just say it is minor. Let's say we do have some jurisdiction. We were interested just to hear what Pulte had to say. If Pulte just said, well, really, you just make your decision yourself, well, there's our answer.
Right.
So I agree with you. I think in the end, it's all a moot point. I don't know what we have to do formally to kind of get off the record what we might have on the record.
I think we have to withdraw a motion to make this a minor modification. Fair enough. Who made the motion?
There was, there was no real vote. There was no motion.
Well, that's what I heard.
Yeah, we definitely vote. We had two votes.
I heard a motion, yeah.
Well, that's not what I, I watched the tape.
Okay, it was a vote of two to one with Andreas abstaining.
Was it a poll? Was it a vote? I mean, well, let's just...
I think it was a poll. There was no real vote.
Okay, so I make the motion to withdraw any motion which may have been made at our last meeting relative to any type of modification for the site plan of Pulte. I think Pulte is the named applicant.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, do we owe Mr. Bailey a phone call to say?
Absolutely.
Put the curb cut where you want it put.
Call him tomorrow.
Call him tomorrow, okay.
Thank you, Ray. All right, so that brings us to the, is everybody ready? Anybody need a break? Everyone doing good? Okay, Turner Street Extension. Are you all here for that? Bingo, we finally hit it.
Do we have a plan of Turner Street with this parcel in question?
I don't, but I can grab the, yeah, I can grab the Christina Estates.
Do you want me to grab them? Because I put them all away.
Way too much meeting going on in your office.
While we're waiting, anybody in the audience own up to having that pretty aggressive Who objected to my walking down the street the other day?
Oh, no. He's really going with the end of the dead end.
That's why you don't want to extend it.
What's Ray gone after? Layout?
Did you know we have a letter in our packet from Ray?
Well, we have...
About this?
Yes, we have a letter from the Chiefs of Police.
Well, they're copied. It's from Ray.
The fire and the DPW. There's so many you're talking about here.
Yes, I read it.
Yeah, you're right, too, yeah.
Good thing you worked out.
Betsy, could you put that up on the easel?
Really?
I'll do it if you want.
Um, does it get staged on?
No, what page is it?
It's the last page.
Hold on. Oh, wait. Okay, for me.
Right.
Let me get a board to discuss this.
Just put it up on the wall.
Put it on the desk here.
All right. Are we ready? We want to wait for Betsy, or?
Is this Bill Greaves here? Not here? Do you mind, Ray, just showing us what's existing now, what roadway they're talking about, what land is involved, and...
This is not the easiest thing to see.
It's a C Mass Ave.
This is Massachusetts Avenue here. This is Turner Street going this way.
That's the paved Turner Street.
This would be, well, just Turner Street proper.
It's not, it's not paved.
This section going towards Massachusetts Avenue is the south of Turner Street.
So that's what we're talking about, that section there?
It has the base, and then it has the, just grass over it, like similar to the sidewalk we were talking about?
Yes, yes, essentially. When Christina Estates was constructed, this was constructed also as a gravel.
And it ends there.
It ends there.
And then what continues to the left? Ray, you want to grab a mic, probably, for the home audience?
I like to hold the mic, anyway.
It continues to the left, right?
To the left, that's where Turner Street ends.
So that's existing Turner Street?
Yes.
So the pass, there were a question of is that, is that about a 200-foot area there?
264 feet.
Does somebody live on that lot, 23, the bar, is that lot 23?
There are houses on both...
There's a house there.
This side and this side of Turner Street belong Massachusetts Avenue.
Okay, there's opening up this roadway leading to any more lots that would become A&R lots?
Possibly.
Where?
Possibly on this side of Turner Street.
So that...
So on the westerly, easterly side of Turner Street.
So even though in front of that is paved, it's not a buildable lot because of frontage?
I believe so, yes.
So by extending this, that would make that a buildable lot?
It would seem so.
What about on the other side of the street?
There's already a dwelling there.
Okay, so what we're talking about is the potential of one more buildable lot if the street's extended?
Potentially. I mean, I haven't researched it to know for sure.
And who owns the extension now? Is that town property?
This here is owned by the town. It was granted to the town back when Christina Estates was created.
Okay, so the town owns that, and it's used as a temporary, is it used for anything?
Yeah, it's an emergency access. So there's a gate along Massachusetts Avenue.
And it goes to the existing Turner Street?
And it goes to the existing Turner Street. So there's basically pedestrian, bicycle, baby stroller access.
And the police and fire want it connected for connectivity, which is...
No, that's not what's been brought. I want to ground the conversation here for a minute. What was brought to us was a neighbor, Bill Greaves.
Yes.
Brought this to the board with the argument that his opinion was that the way the site plan was approved was that, given a certain point in time, this road would be connected to Massachusetts Ave. So we've had multiple conversations. We've talked at least two, maybe three meetings about this situation. And in my opinion, I feel like we have researched the fact that there was no promise that this road was going to be opened at any time. My feeling is that what was approved as part of the decision was that this would be maintained as an emergency access, which it is, and which is, which is, I feel, the condition of the site plan's been met. So in my opinion, I just want to throw out there, because I know there's lots of different opinions. We've seen your comments. We've read through a lot of letters. We've read through a lot of emails. We've heard people speak to us before in other meetings. My suggestion is that we say that as far as the planning board is concerned, what we have the right to oversee is that site plans are developed as we approve them, and that's what's been done here. We don't have any jurisdiction to rule on any other changes. We haven't been brought with a proposal of an A&R. We haven't been brought with a proposal from the town to want to modify this. It was a person asking us, were the conditions of the site plan met? And in my opinion, I say yes, they have. If any future changes want to be made, that should be brought to another board, whether that's the Board of Selectmen or some other town official, because I think our job is done here on this.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that opinion. You know, for me, being new to the town and being new to the process, I thought it was appropriate to come to the planning board to see if there was any desire in that early approval to make this into a permanent road.
I agree with Michelle, and, you know, I think, you know, the way our town is structured, you know, we have town meeting as our form of government. So if there's sufficient interest, residents can form petitions, and they can take things to town meeting, and the Board of Selectmen and other folks, you know, can participate in the process. But, you know, in terms of the catalyst for, you know, this discussion and these discussions came from Bill Greaves, and since that time, we've seen other opinion from the Greaves family, which is in opposition to Mr. Greaves in terms of his opinion. So I see, you know, no, I see no reason why the planning board should be taking on this matter at this point.
If it's not the decision, it's statute of fraud. It's not happening. The only way the applicant has any suggestion, the one... The only way the applicant has any suggestion, the one or two that could be bettered by having a buildable lot with frontage, would be to apply for a subdivision permit, get permission from the town to better that road up to town standards and freeing up his lot. And then if that was the case, then you'd have a purchase that was, a developer that was able to construct the road for the town, and then it would start through processes of regular subdivision from scratch. And all of the complaints, all the objections would then be heard as far as approving the subdivision. But as far as that, it's a null point. It's nothing, it should be for our board.
We agree, we agree.
So I don't mean to have you all show up and feel like you don't have anything to say, but we don't even have a vote to take. It's really just a discussion. So I think if we're all agreement.
Well, I think, fair enough. I think it's further to the discussion. I think it's fair to also feed back to the residents, many of whom are sitting here, some other information that we gathered from our public safety people and our DPW people. Just add the information. The Chief of Police would said, sure, he'd support that because he always likes to see better access to communities back and forth. And if it were to be developed, opened up rather, and made into a full road, he'd like to see that. The Fire Chief said, no, I'm fine with it. I have access in emergency situations. I have a key to that gate. I don't have a problem with it. It's fine the way it is. And the Director of DPW said, you know, if we open that up, there's a lot of places on Turner Street that are too narrow, and the street is going to have to be improved. And if that happens, most likely, but he couldn't say for sure, but most likely, the residents would get betterment fees for the cost of improving the road, certainly the width and maybe some other issues down there. So those are issues to consider if someone in the audience or some other resident chooses to come forward, as John suggested, with a petition to the Board of Selectmen for town meeting to open up the road.
Does anybody have any questions? You just have to take a microphone and identify yourself. It's because we're on cable, so. Just make sure the button is on, please.
Little green light.
Thank you.
That's a quick question. Nicole Seidel at 29 Mass Ave. Obviously, I'd be pretty affected by it because we're right next to it. And just curious, we do have a petition signed, and so it's not worth giving it to you guys? We would just get it to the Town Selectmen at this point?
Yeah, there's really nothing up for votes. There's nothing to petition against, so, I mean, perhaps you'd want to go on record with it, but yeah, perhaps to the town might be a better.
Maybe in the form of like a memorandum with the attachment not to actually execute the petition because there's nothing to.
There's nothing to petition.
Petition.
Okay, that's it.
Hi, I'm Virginia Greaves. I'm Bill's sister. And I was wondering if the road is bettered, and we might get fees, but we'd also lose property. And my place is almost on the road anyway. You know, that would bring me very, very close to a lot of traffic. Right now, trucks won't go down there, which I like. And I know that, I see a lot of trucks getting all upset because they go through and they don't like to go down there. Some trucking companies won't let people go down, so, I mean, that's huge, you know. It would really be ruining that road.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Fugjala at 20 Turner Street. I just have a more of a clarifying question regarding the road betterment on Turner Street. My understanding is because of the Fern Ridge work, that we're actually already expecting some betterment on Turner Street, which yet, has yet to happen. So just as a point of clarification there.
I don't know anything about this.
There has been work. I'm not certain if it's complete, but there has been.
It's not complete, and it's been stalled. I believe they've done Winston, but they haven't done Turner.
I'm coming into the game late, but I did speak with the DPW Director, and there is, there are plans to do some paving on Turner Street from where Spencer ties in, going south to, I think about where the culvert is, if that makes any sense to anybody. But there's a brook that crosses Turner Street. So to about that point, there's supposed to be some improvements done. The timing of that, I'm not exactly sure at this point, but the DPW Director is aware of it and is working on that.
Yeah, that's probably because we've been talking to him. Because it's right in front of my house.
I'm on Winston Road. I've been living, I've lived there for 29 years, and I would just like to say, because this never got to the DPW, and I've been in touch with Bob McGee, with Mr. Hathaway and that kind of thing, I want to thank the town and whether the planning board had anything to do with it, and I'm just hoping it works well for Turner Road, that it was because of the town that Winston Road got paved, not because of Fern Ridge development. And I just want to go on record to say, thank you very much for taking care of that because it's, hasn't been that pleasant. And just on that, on that point, I'll just stop there. But thank you so much for all that you've done, and I'm very happy for my new neighbors here and the people on Turner Street to hear that right now what the decision is. So thanks for your time.
One more, I'm sorry. Nicole Seidel again, 29 Mass Ave. I just was curious what lot you were speaking of that's actually, doesn't have frontage on Turner Street? Do you know? Because I'm just.
I think he was, there's no number, right beside, to the left of that lot, 20, is it 23?
I think it's Bill Greaves, isn't it? Isn't it Bill's? It's Bill's property.
Because it's kind, I live right next to.
Is this what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, it's Bill's property.
This could possibly be a buildable lot.
That has street, doesn't it? It does. It actually has street.
May not have enough, I think, is the question. And I don't think any of us know for sure.
Really, the dirt or gravel area starts where Vice's house is. So that's why I'm just curious if that's, you know, it didn't seem, you have to walk past that second area too, right?
Is that more than 500 feet down the paved area of Turner Street? That last piece of land? Because if it is, that would be exceeding a cul-de-sac, no?
The road's in pretty rough shape, so it's actually hard to tell where the pavement, the true pavement stops and where the kind of gravelly road area starts. But I would say it's definitely pavement right up until.
Her house, yeah. Way, yeah, Pastville's lot. And she's, and technically Vice's the last lot. Sorry, V. V's the last lot, and, you know, so turning around is really her, would be potentially more her issue than it would be his.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, I don't understand.
All right, we're gonna, I'm sorry, we're just gonna keep things wrapped up.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to. I always wanted to clarify that that is, does actually have road in front of it, so.
Thank you. Everyone good? Good, good? All right, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate all your comments and. Right. Moving along. We're on to new slash old business. I think we've talked about the Economic Development Committee before, right?
Not really in any detail.
Oh, do you have some detail to share?
Well, not, as a former member, I can say that that committee. And I've worked on it for a number of years. I found it a very frustrating experience. And the reason is.
Serving on the committee?
Yeah. The reason is that we got essentially zero direction from the two bosses.
One second. Hey, guys, do you mind just taking it outside? We still have a meeting going on. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our two bosses on that committee were the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. And it was passive direction at best, and usually what we were doing is coming forward with an idea and see if we could get it blessed. And very often, it wasn't blessed. It was a frustrating experience. Very few times did we ever have a full complement of people. And so when we put forward an idea, you know, two or three of us that would do the work and the others were just kind of, it was very frustrating. I think the fact that there is an Economic Development Committee is an opportunity that the town is missing. And that with the proper staffing of volunteers and the proper direction from the Board of Selectmen and this planning board, we could probably do some good things to help foster economic development within the town. But as it is, without some changes, I think it's very frustrating to be a member of that board.
And I can speak to that a little bit. I think, you know, one of the things, the point that was made in the, fortunately, the townspeople supported the concept of hiring a planner, and, you know, we have Ray on board now. And so, you know, Ray is, he's learned a lot. He's definitely contributing substantially at this point, and I'm sure will continue to develop in his role. And I think the idea is for Ray to be a key resource in terms of economic development. And in terms of, you know, how that's done, my thinking is that Ray is working with planning, he's working with the Board of Selectmen, the town manager, the DPW. He's working with a lot of the people that basically get things done and make decisions on behalf of the town. So I think the situation is going to be better, you know, once Ray's in a position where he can devote some time to economic development. I know there's been even some conversations about promoting, actively promoting the town so that we can attract business perhaps. So at this point, there's just been, you know, some discussion, but I think, you know, Ray's had a lot of other priorities, not the least of which is really just learning in terms of, you know, getting the tribal knowledge. So that's really what I offer, just being involved with the two boards that you mentioned where you feel like there's a lack of direction. I think it's going to be better.
The Bylaw Study Committee, Walter, remember?
Yes.
I think over 10 years, we probably had a quorum. One year, we had a super turnout, and we put 24 bylaws through town meeting.
Oh, my gosh.
The rest of the nine years, I would say maybe four or five times in nine years we had a quorum. And you were there for a couple of years, just nobody cared.
Yeah.
But now that we have this new setup and Ray's leading the way, it's been formalized, and the attendance has been extraordinary.
Yes.
So that's a help. Maybe that'll funnel down to the economic development.
Well, that's good. I think that's great.
Need some familiarity.
I think I just would offer that we have an opportunity here. If we can find three, four, five more volunteers to populate that committee, with Ray there kind of offering his background and direction, we can get some things done that we couldn't get done in earlier years. And it's important to the town, important to the town.
Absolutely. And what I didn't mention is that, to the extent, you know, Ray may have the opportunity to do some of those things in terms of economic development, he's actually doing them, and other people are involved in the process because there's been regular meetings through the summer to try to work through all the details associated with a few proposals that have been made to the town for significant development. And I appreciate your time, Walter. You know, John, you've been participating in those meetings. I've attended a few of them. But, you know, the former Southwood property that's taken, you know, a very, very significant amount of time, I'm sure of Ray's, as well as people have, you know, given their own time, various people that don't otherwise, may not otherwise serve on boards and committees that are giving their time to, you know, listen to the plan, ask the tough questions, work through iterations to try to see if this is something that makes sense for the town and what kind of zoning may, may be appropriate. Ultimately, it'll come down to the decision of the townspeople at town meeting. So in a way, you were doing some of the economic development, but it's, right now, it's kind of targeted at a management project in terms of resources.
That's right. And think about it too. I mean, that, that group is wrestling with that, that issue with Southwood. That came to us. We didn't go initiate that discussion.
Right.
It was passive as opposed to active. The biggest issue we've had for years is right out here, the center of town, and we can't for the life of us get this thing going. There couldn't be a more key issue than finishing the bloody center of town that we've been trying to do for 20 years. I just think that if we are able to pull a few more people together, Ray's got a little more time once he learns where the men's room is, you know, that we'll have a great opportunity to.
Get in there, yeah.
To drum up business here and get some development going. So just that.
Yeah, well, you know, and I hadn't thought of this before, and I'm not sure the folks, you know, would be interested, but some of the people who are participating in that whole Southwood project in terms of trying to ask the questions and work through the details, maybe a few of those folks would be interested in continuing on in the form of, you know, like an EDC member or something like that. But right now, I think people are just, are just trying to finish their summer and try to work through and.
Right. Meet the September 4 deadline.
Drive towards the deadline, yeah, yeah. So, I mean.
I think, I think that's quite possible, and that's kind of the direction I was envisioning this committee to go, is to start moving more towards these larger projects. I know Southwood is at a point right now where we're not going to be ready for town meeting for the fall. So that's not going to be a fall issue. It may be a spring issue. But to have an ongoing committee that can continue to meet would be great. I think when this committee was established, there was a promise that it was going to end in January. It may not end in January.
You didn't say which January, did you?
Right. And so with that promise, but there may be, there may be another iteration of this committee that we could, we could form that could help this happen. I, you know, I'm not, I don't want to morph things from one thing into another, but there might be a natural metamorphosis that happens and can turn into this Economic Development Committee. And you're right, there are so many different things. This town center is certainly a place where you could really take a bite out of, there's a new owner of the, of the two properties that are wide open, the green space that's out there, as well as the Walgreens and the retail A. So that gives us a lot of hope that there's more things that can happen. There are a number of properties that are in town that are still looking for tenants, looking for someone that can occupy, either build and lease or own and build a facility. Shire Industrial Park is another place that needs some help, could use some word on the street. And I think the Economic Development Committee could really help foster some nice development in Shire and help the town really turn that into something that's really a gem. It's, and it's rough right now, but it's not too far away. And then growing from there, you know, Dedham Street and some, there's some vacant properties along Dedham Street that may need a little boost, but, you know, you got more hands, you can make light work of this. And I think.
That's right.
It'd be great to have the committee reformed. So I would be all for it and look forward to the work if we can, we can get some people that are willing to share their ideas and their time.
As a matter of fact, that was an integral part of the interview process for Ray, and I think you said it, right? And I think, John, there were a few people that said it. So that was a big part of the job you set up for. Sounds exciting to me.
Great.
So if the town center isn't finished within 50.
It's my fault.
Write that down.
All right, consultant contracts, what do we need to do? Expiring just a month.
Well, I think as far as engineering, what we had learned is that the Water Health had entered into an agreement for their requirements.
And they did an RFP or did they just re, just extend it?
They did an RFP. They did an RFP.
I guess that's where we always get stuck. Do we need to do another RFP or can we just extend? Are there any purchasing requirements that were held to?
I don't know.
So could we just extend them?
Dave, could you leave the room for a minute?
I know, it's kind of an awkward conversation.
Well, we've been extending them for.
Yeah, we have, yeah, a couple of times.
You know, it's a, it's a tough situation because best management practices, for a town official would always suggest that you, just as a, as a policy, open up things every number of years.
Right.
Regardless of whether you're happy or not. But I think the last time it was opened up, I wasn't a part of this board, obviously, but I think that PFC was the only return we got, wasn't it?
That was before my time here, I think.
I think it was the only proposal we got.
So another tactic that we use. So another tactic that we use at work, if we're very happy with a particular, you know, vendor or consultant, what we will do is a little bit of research, maybe what other, who other towns are using and what the rates are, what the hourly rates are, and at least try and do some investigation. Are we getting sort of the fair market rate?
It's been a while since we've done that. We've done it before.
We do have a fiduciary responsibility to applicants that come in. I have no reason to believe that anything is unfair, but our responsibility where you're dealing with professionals, it's sort of a, a time hourly rate type of deal, and it's done off premises, so the control is limited. So we have people come before us, and they are held hostage, if you exclude the word, to whatever the pricing is. And whether some other towns have a way of formalizing that and come up with, come up with fixed prices for scope of work or not as a starting point. The problem with engineering, and I, I know it in my own business, that the first set of plans and the scope for that set of plans is never the last set of plans. There are additions to additions and additions. What really complicates the whole process, you know?
And also depending on the project, the level of complexity, could be a much simpler or a much more expensive review.
And what's, what can be unfair to the engineers is you can have someone that submits a less than adequate complete plan-
Right.
...and the engineer is doing three times the work because it's all being brought in in bits and pieces, which is unfair to them too. So it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough area to sort of control, even though we do have responsibility. I would think, Michelle, that if you called some abutting towns and just find out how they work their process and the structure, that might, at least we've done outside research to see.
Yeah, I think we should at least be testing the hourly rates. I think that's fair. And, yeah, maybe some examples of how other towns do it. I would at least be in favor of, of testing the hourly rates against some other benchmarks. I think there's such a value to the, to the history of having, you know, the knowledge that we get that PSC has had over the, over the long term, even though it feels long. I think that's a benefit. I think it would be a terrible thing to just throw away.
I think where it comes into place is with the, the fees. So there's a certain fee schedule. And I think that's ultimately what we would benchmark. So there's our hourly rates that the consultants charge as they're doing work on a project, but ultimately, you know, it began with a fee schedule, which, you know, at least it's my understanding that they, they don't, the consultants don't request additional fees. So to John's point, you know, some projects perhaps, you know, the fees may be higher than what they could otherwise be because those engineers are doing things in a more disciplined way, the, all the information's there, et cetera. Other projects, perhaps, it's more haphazard.
Of course.
So I think it's the fee schedule, because we, we have done this before. I agree, we should do it again, but that's how typically-
Of course, you can't go solely on, on the hourly rate, because the hourly rate is all done off premises. And you've got someone that works faster, that knows the subject matter better, works at a much, a much more efficient pace than someone that's slow. So it's very tough. In a perfect world, now that we have a planner that makes sure the plans that are submitted are totally complete, the whole process is complete from day one. It'd be nice, and we should talk to Tom with this, in unison with Dave, or, Tom is still the, the top dog.
Yeah, he is.
If he could, at least it's a benefit to the, to the applicant, if he could look at the scope of a project and review it and come up with a fixed contract price, knowing what's standard, along with a lot of subject to, such as things being, you know, redone or changed, just to give the applicant that's filing some range of, for this project with a novel filing, this will be the cost. And then if you start submitting things that are less than adequate or, or reports that aren't proper, and has to be additional work. I know in Concom, which is a lot easier than this, we send out every contract to bid, we get RFPs, we get a fixed price. The fixed price guarantees so many meetings, the exact amount of work they're going to do, how many meetings it'll attend on our behalf, et cetera. Once the level of work exceeds that price, we get an updated contract from the consultant, and each time the client deposits the money before we move forward. So they always know during the process what they're getting. This is a little bit more involved and, and subjective because there's much more things involved when you, when you engineer a site plan or a subdivision, so.
Well, even attending a meeting for us, it could be three hours, it could be five and a half hours, right?
Well, they actually do that as part, they don't charge the town for that. That's basically the agreement that they've had with the town. They'll attend the meetings.
Which is a significant benefit.
Interesting. So I don't know, I don't like to push everything off on you, Ray, and so push back if this isn't appropriate. But I, I would be interested in maybe reaching out to at least two other towns and maybe polling them, two other towns that don't use PSC. Polling them on how they sort of-
Oh, that's gonna be difficult.
How they structure, particularly on their planning board-
Sure.
...their consultant agreements. And then if it's like ours where it's hourly, then if we could just get their hourly, if they'd be willing to share the hourly rate structure so that at least we have something to compare to.
It's public records, they should be able to share that.
I think we should discuss this when Tom's here, the next meeting. I think he can offer a lot of insight if he does a lot of the building, et cetera. He may be able to give us some help on, on what he would need to come up with a, a fixed price, at least for the initial overview.
Well, let's at least see what other towns are doing.
Start with that, Michelle, I agree with you.
If other towns aren't doing that, we shouldn't be out of the norms. So let's see what other towns are doing and try and be, I don't, use it as a benchmark anyway, as a discussion.
I can do that.
So there's hourly rate, and then there's the fee, basically. When a project is initiated, the fee schedule, we have a certain fee schedule, as you know, and that's, those are the things that we want to benchmark.
I will tell you, all the towns that I've worked in, it's always by the hour, and you never know what the-
How much it's gonna be. Which seems to make sense, because it's so hard to predict.
No different than when you put money into the, the town review account. When it's going to be reviewed and how much, you just don't know, and you just ask the question. That's pretty much consistent town to town.
I personally think it's a little unfair to the consultant to make them commit to that because, you know, it's a, it's a risk.
Let me, I have two points. First is, let me just ask a question. The town, for some time, has wanted to hire a town planner and was able to find the money in the budget, and we actually executed, and here we is. Has there been a similar discussion about one or more town engineers down the road? Is, is that a desire that the town, the direction that the town wants to move in, in two, three, four, five years?
The DPW has been asking that for, I would say, three to five years, but their purpose-
Back when Butch was here?
No.
Okay.
No. After. And that wasn't to, to take over the work that's done on the planning board's behalf. That's more or less to help them with all the construction process and all the things that Bob do. Bob has a significant account where he submits a lot of work to different engineering firms and water consultants and that.
Yeah, yeah.
And he was looking for somebody that could probably work under his jurisdiction-
Sure.
...to do all the work he does.
Well, there's, but as you say, there's a consulting contract for the conservation. There's one here. I don't know if there's a couple of other boards, maybe.
You go to a town like Norwood, Norwood has a planner, they have a town engineer. But when you go to the planning board, it's the planner and the planning board's consulting engineer. The town engineer does not attend those meetings, so.
So what John said is also my recollection. And I think where it got a bit complicated and where I think Bob lost some of his interest in the concept is when we layered on it the planning, the engineering for planning, et cetera. Now you're dealing with skill set, capability, you know, which generally extends beyond one person.
Yeah.
Where one person doesn't necessarily have all the skills, you know, let alone conservation, right, in terms of all the nuances of conservation and habitat and all that. So it's not as straightforward, I think, once you, you know, the devil's in the details. That's kind of where we ended up with this the last time we discussed it, and it hasn't been brought up again.
I think, I think the Fernridge development and the Fox Run development has sort of put Bob over the edge because the oversight needed for the road construction and what was tried to, tried to circumvent on a regular basis, and he had me out there a number of times, it would drive anybody insane. They needed constant review, and you needed review by, by soil specialists and engineers and structural people because you can't be out there every day. And when you weren't out there, the trenches were filled with ledge, they were backfilled with sand, and somebody should be reviewing these things on a regular basis because the town in the end gets stuck with this. And I think that, I think he came to you folks before asking for someone on site, but that was after he endured three or four years of road construction and the changeover and all that. So I think he needs somebody just to work under the, the DPW auspices without bridges and things like that.
Okay, my second point was that, I may be wrong, but it's been my observation that we've hired Gino's company to act in a, in a planning capacity and to do such things as write decisions and whatnot. And it strikes me that at some point, that responsibility will fall on the shoulders of this gentleman. And so the question would be, when does this gentleman think he's up to speed? When do we think that we ought to say to Gino, gee, thanks very much, and you've done a great job, but it's, it's over, you know?
The last time we raised this, we did talk about keeping Gino on until we felt there was a comfortable enough overlap. And so I do think it's just partly of, you know, we'll keep him on as long as you feel like we need to keep him on, but obviously, if you're feeling like you're okay, then we should, we should move on as well, so.
Well, at this point, I would love to keep Gino on because he, he does add, add value to the town.
And I think Gino's role is so much more limited and has, you know, a lot less fee impact.
He's administrator, and Ray, you know, Ray has a resume to do everything from make breakfast for the staff to go do planning and bring in business.
Yeah. He hasn't been bringing it to you?
I get close.
And I mean, our rules, I have it on the zoning by law for 10 years, and they're just very, very confusing. And Bob does a good job interpreting them, and he's been there for a long time, and Ray, anybody coming in has a huge curve.
Sure.
All right. So I'm gonna go on a limb here and say that in order to do the research and get some feedback on PSC's situation, and then to give Gino a little bit more time overlap with Ray, I'm suggesting that we extend contracts to the end of the year, at least December, end of this, end of the calendar year, right, September 30th. So we have to make a decision, at least if not tonight, but by our next meeting, because those will expire.
Yeah, and I, all I would ask is that as the, the situation has changed vis a vis Gino-
Yeah.
...that, you know, the town is still getting value, which is commensurate with his compensation. So that may look a little different right now than it did before.
Yeah.
You know, maybe that's phone calls with Ray during the day, you know, Gino having some, Ray having some access to Gino for questions and answers. So in the past, you know, Gino has been more present at this meeting.
Right.
Well, he's not here anymore. So in terms of what he's doing to support the, the planning board, we just need to know that it's commensurate with his compensation, or we should do something like-
And is his compensation hourly?
It's hourly.
Just hourly based on whatever service he provides? Okay.
Okay.
So it's not like we're giving him a fee and then potentially only using half of that value or something?
There's also a connection with Gino because he's the chair of the Southwest Area Planning Group that Ray participates in. And so it's not that you lose complete connection with Gino.
That's true. So that's my thought. If we don't have to vote tonight, but we should soon, or just think about-
I'm okay with that.
It's another three months.
I support that.
Are the current contracts up?
September 30th. So we have one more meeting before they would expire.
I'm okay with that.
Maybe two more meetings.
And then maybe Steve will be back in the mix here, and he can participate in that as well, rather than-
I would hope so.
Those decisions will help.
I wouldn't count on it, but-
Do we wanna take a vote tonight or want to wait till the next meeting?
Let's wait till the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so we have some meeting minutes we can firm up and then see if anybody else has any other new business. We have two sets of meeting minutes. We have July 29th, because I skipped that last time.
And August 12th.
And August 12th.
I looked at them. They look, they look fine to me.
Make a motion to approve the planning board minutes for July 29th, 2014.
Second?
I'll go in favor.
Aye.
Aye. With Walter's assistance, I would like to, since Walter reviewed them and I was absent last time, I'd like to request approval of the minutes of the planning board meeting on August 12th, 2014, as written.
Second.
Oops, third.
I'll go in favor.
Aye.
Any other new items?
I just have the signature page for 242, Dedham, if you guys want to sign. And then Ray and I will make those changes tomorrow, make that file.
Great. I think we are all set then.
Do we, do we have, we have another meeting, right, the 18th?
We have a meeting on the 18th.
Did we, do you want to schedule one beyond that?
Nope.
I can't take that one.
Nope.
You moved the chair. Ah, jeez.
I think we can do that the next meeting. We don't usually go two meetings out, so I'm comfortable waiting if everyone else is.
I'm comfortable. That's fine.
All right. So we'll say goodnight.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
So-